Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, July 18th. It is now 6 o'clock, 6:03. Please join Councilmember Osborne in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we join together to ask that you remind us that we are people of great strength, and while it is powerful, our strength should be harnessed with wisdom and empathy and controlled with understanding. Remove the hardness of our hearts, allow our grief not to be used for anger and retaliation, but used for change and love. Please clothe a heavier veil of protection around the ones that put themselves in harm's way for us. Please allow our people to remember that police officers are protectors and peace officers. Lord, the world watches this nation as a leader amongst men. Please let them see that we are change agents for good and not evil. For while we watch things unfold from our homes, let the citizens of Goodyear be seen as the city that has people making a difference in each other's lives. In the mighty name we pray, amen.
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 Thank you, Councilmember Osborne. Very well done. We're now, we're all here. We have two communication items tonight. The first item is an update on the Southwest Lending Closet activities. Mr. Frank Scott, President of the Southwest Lending Closet, to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me be here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. I'm the President of the Southwest Lending Closet for this year, and they just asked me to come by and give a, basically, appreciation of the donations that your city gives to us, and just to update you on how we are doing and some of the challenges that the lending closet is facing. I'll let you read the things I didn't like when I was on the council, people reading things to me that I can read, so. At the lending closet, we do lend durable medical goods for anybody that asks, even people on vacation at Christmas time and that stuff. If you have a driver's license, we'll lend it to you. Knee scooters are the big thing, most popular item we have. We can't keep them in stock. As you'll see, our growth is really growing, and we're already on a record year to surpass And those are our challenges. Space is the big one. We are going to have a September board meeting, and we're going to decide if there's any way we could stay in our existing location or look for another one. So that's going to be our big challenge here. Right now, it's an all-volunteer thing. No one gets paid to do anything for the lending closet. So all the money donated goes to equipment or just utility and maintenance for the equipment in our building. Right now, we have three ladies that were using their garage to store the excess material and stuff like that, the equipment. We just don't have room. We met with the City of Avondale trying to expand, lot of hurdles there. I don't think it will be possible for us to financially do it. So we might be looking for a new building or something, but that's our next challenge, the main one. And once again, the donation that your city gives the lending closet helps us. It makes us move forward. Your city is the number-one users of the lending closet, too. Not that that make, you know, just to let you know how we break it down on what cities and that stuff, but we've loaned, you know, to people from Taiwan before and stuff like that. And I'll, yeah, I'll answer any questions if I has any, but really, it's just a thank you for your continued support, and I don't think you could pick a better organization to choose to support.
Thank you, Frank. I know that the people are going to want to comment. Who would like to start? Sherri Lortano, Vice Mayor?
I just want to say thank you and to your great organization. A lot of people don't know about the great work you do, and it's non, no fee, right, to people?
No fee.
And that really helps people out. So thank you and thank for all your volunteers. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pizzillo?
As a board member, also Sherlin, I've been proud to serve and also have used the equipment when my wife got sick. So again, it's a great service in the community, and can't emphasize enough, there's not a single person who gets paid a dime in that organization. It's all volunteer. So again, thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
Frank, thanks for coming tonight. It's one of those, we know it exists, and it, but it's great to get an update, and, you know, I'm hopeful that you'll overcome a few of these challenges. Maybe we'll find a place to call you home here in our city.
Councilman Holman?
Thanks for coming, Frank, and many know, many do not know, and Wally just asked me, the closet actually started in the year 2000, so we're in our 16th year. And I'm very proud to say that I was part of the original board that started the lending closet under the fire in the belly of Glow O'Donnell. No discussion of the closet is complete without Glow's name being mentioned. But we're coming tonight because, as we being the closet, because we want our councils to know how much they're appreciated, that funding is, is, and Goodyear is extremely, and I'm proud to say that, as a Goodyear resident, supportive of the closet and lets us decide where the money is going to be spent. They don't direct it to equipment or, or running. So it is a, because it is all volunteer, I stand in awe of all of the women and men. We have a repair crew, we have, it is a phenomenon, in my opinion. I have not seen a 501(c)(3) organization be able to be run by all volunteers and operate at the level that we do. So, thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Sherlin. Councilman Campbell?
Well, thanks, Frank. It's always nice to see you, and we do love to support the Southwest Lending Closet. Sherlin and I, in talking about Glow O'Donnell, we have a similar program like this, but it's only for good, for Pebble Creek residents, and Glow was part of that, and she saw such a need in the outside community of the city itself, and that's how the ideal kind of just kept growing and growing, and we're really grateful, and it's really kind of ironic. Just this week, someone texted me looking for an organization to donate two wheelchairs, and I immediately said, "Southwest Lending Closet," and gave them your name and phone number. So you'll be hearing from someone from Buckeye soon that they're going to donate a couple of wheelchairs to you. So thank you, and please thank all your volunteers on behalf of our council.
I would.
We appreciate it.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, obviously, the thanks go around, and you know what, too, our councilmembers that have sat on that board, I appreciate your time going into it, and Frank, you, and all your volunteers. It's an outstanding organization, and I appreciate it. My question, how much square footage is it that you're looking for? That was my, you said that's your big, your big issue, so.
Give me the hint.
Without saying, without saying warehousing.
5,000 square feet.
5,000 square feet, okay.
What are you in now?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, good. I think you've heard all the positive comments, Frank, and please take it back to the board, and please tell them that. And we all realize, when you think of 501(c)(3)es and what the CEOs make of those, and the amounts of them, it is exceptional that we would have a group that would be so beneficial to our city. So thanks so much.
And thank you.
Well, let's give a round of applause. And that applause comes from our hearts. All right, the next item is a communication item, is a presentation on the Bureau of Land Management programs, and I'm introducing Joe Schmidt, the long-range planner. We'll introduce our presenters. Joe?
Mayor and council, thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Leon Thomas, who's the District Manager for the Phoenix District Office of the Bureau of Land Management. He's fairly new to this particular position after holding positions of Branch Manager for Leadership and Business Administrative Services at the BLM's National Training Center, which is located here in Phoenix. And he also served as the Sierra Front Field Manager for the Carson City District in Nevada. We have been working closely with his office on the completion of the Environmental Impact Statement for the Sonoran Valley Parkway project, and I'm happy to report that the Programmatic Agreement for the Section 106 consultation that was approved by the council back in April has been fully executed by SHIPPO and is now complete. We hope to bring the EIS for the project to a Record of Decision in the very near future. And with that brief introduction, let me turn it over to Mr. Leon Thomas of the Phoenix District Office.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, for the record, I'm Leon Thomas. I'm the District Manager for the Phoenix District Bureau of Land Management. You know, the real purpose for me to come here today is that I wanted to extend our hand in an olive branch, basically saying that we want to have relationships with all that we serve in the community. And so we've been making our rounds to the various city governments, county governments, and also the tribal governments to just introduce ourselves and let you know what we have going. And we're going to introduce a couple of projects, but I also wanted to just let you all know that we are open to taking back anything that's on your radar as far as things that you would like for us to work on as well. I brought with me Ed Kender. He is the Field Manager for the Lower Sonoran Field Office, which comprises of the southern half of our district. Just briefly, just to give a quick overview of the district, as you can see there, everything that's not shaded out, that's colored in the middle, that makes up the landscape of our district. So our district ranges from the Utah border all the way down to the international border with Mexico. The primary surface land-based responsibilities are everything shaded in yellow there in the middle toward the south there, but we have mineral rights, mineral interests, subsurface-type interests up north. And so we work with seven counties and six tribes in this district here. Our district comprises of two national monuments, the Agria National Monument, which you guys drive past when you go up 17 there, and then we also have the Sonoran Desert National Monument down south there. So you see the, the area shaded there in the yellow down to the south, that's the Sonoran Desert National Monument. We also have a national conservation, I'm sorry, we also have one national historic trail, 11 wilderness areas, as well as a national recreation trail. We also, in dealing with the city governments, we want to ensure that you guys know that as a leadership team, we are very, very interested in the outreach, outreach in the community. We recognize that with a population base of about 4.1 million people in our backyard, that there's going to be diverse interests. The programs that we have on our district really comprise just about every program that the Bureau of Land Management manages other than oil. So we have Rangeland Management, we have Wild Horse and Borough Management, we have minerals, mining, outdoor recreation planning, you name it. I could go through all the programs, but just about every program is what we cover. So as far as projects go, the first project is one that I know that you all are very interested in. It's the Sonoran Valley Parkway Project. Right now, the federal register notice for this particular project is being reviewed by our state office. It's actually been there for quite some time. There's been some angst from our national office back in Washington as to the public perception with the Parkway goings or abutting so close to our national monument down south. And so what we've been doing is we've been doing some additional outreach with some of our constituent groups out there who have interest down in the monument area. We've also been briefing staff back in Washington to get them more up to speed as to how it is not as close to the monument boundary as it looks on the map and how it could actually create some type of buffer for the monument. In addition to that, our state director, Ray Swazal, was back in DC last week. He met with front office staff in Washington, and he is comfortable with us securing a briefing to the front office in Washington either next week or the week after. So within the next two weeks, I'm being told that we'll be able to brief the front office and hopefully move the federal register notice package forward after that briefing. Two weeks, I think we're coming down the home stretch here. Legs are tired, but let's not give up. Okay?
So you have to come back.
I will come back with some good news, hopefully.
Welcome, Mr. Kender.
Glad to be here, Mayor, Council Chamber. The next project that I would like to talk to, whoops, is three of them on this slide dealing with the Recre, Sonoran Desert National Monument. Back in 2013, oh, 2012, the Recre, Resource Management Plan was completed by the Phoenix District and the Lower Sonoran Field Office that included the Sonoran Desert National Monument. Within that plan, there were two court challenges, one in 2013, in May, April 2013, dealing with grazing on the monument, and one in September of 2013, dealing with the recreational target shooting. It took a couple of years to go through the federal court system, and just this past year, we were remanded back both cases. In dealing with the target shooting, the recreational management plan, the Record of Decision, and the Environmental Impact Statement that all dealt with the decision, were vacated for recreational target shooting, and the court found in favor of the plaintiffs. So we are on a timeline to go back to the drawing board and reassess the impacts of the monument objects and recreational target shooting, and we have until September 30th of 2017 to complete that. Right now, we are in the process of the contract just being awarded to the contractor who's completing the Environmental Impact Statement for us, and we are on line to do a face-to-face turnover of what we have worked on from the decision of the court, turning it over to the contractor, and then City of Goodyear actually signed on as a cooperating agency. So we're looking forward to getting that project put to bed, and right now, we're looking at different alternatives, and that's as far as I could comment on it right now until it goes to the public for review. The grazing as well was remanded back to us as far as land health evaluation. It did not vacate the decisions, it just won, the court relied on us to go back to the drawing board on the impacts of grazing on the national monument and its objects, and we have a little bit longer timeline to complete the land health evaluation and then look at the impacts and the, see whether or not there are impacts on the monument objects and whether or not it's feasible to graze on the monument. And that will determine whether or not it's just an amendment to the Resource Management Plan or whether or not we have to do a RMP amendment. That'll determine, and that should take about two years to get to that point before we move forward. The next one is the Wan Batista De Anza Recreational Management Zone Recreation Plan. Back in 2008, in the heyday of everybody in the economic boom, then the economic development around the monument and greater Phoenix area, people started buying OHVs for recreational purposes, and that was at the time the monument was open to all traffic, and the public did not respect the trails that were designated, and basically went off trails and ruined the resources that we had there in the national objects. So they closed it for a period of time, and the monument was not recovering as quickly as we would have liked it. So they extended the closure and put together projects to reclaim some of the damaged lands and the resources. During that process, we, it has recovered quite well over the past years, and now we're in a position to reopen and implement the decisions from the RMP in allowing camping and other recreational uses within that zone. The Recreation Management Zone for the Wan Batista De Anza is the green shaded area north of, north of 238 and south of the North Maricopa Wilderness that you see on the maps. What we're looking at developing are three access points from 238 to one on the east, one in the central, and one on the western area for, in development of camping areas, mostly primitive camping areas. On the western end, there's going to be, there already is a facility with a vault toilet, and we may install another one depending on the use, and as well as in incorporating overnight camping for RVs as well as just primitive, primitive sites, and RV sites will have a picnic table and a fire ring. And we are looking to limit the access going through the Wan Batista De Anza and the Butterfield Pass. If the traffic picks up, we are also looking at incorporating or developing a hiking trail alongside it as well. And then the last project that I'd like to brief you on is the tamarisk removal or the Gila River Environmental Assessment, the Lower Gila River Flood Plane Study that was recently completed. Maricopa County Flood District is the lead agency to do an environmental assessment. It's approximately 18 miles from 85 to the east, and they're looking, they already signed, turned over to a contractor who's going to be completing the EA, and we have signed off as a cooperating agency, and we are going to be reassessing the biological assessment due to the recent listing of the Yiddel Cuckoo. Currently, we've already have an environmental assessment, have been treating tamarisk to the west of 85, and we have seen, we have been installing fire breaks and tamarisk removal as well, and we're seeing benefits along with that, with some of the fires that were, lightning started, that it actually, the fire breaks are actually holding up. So, and that's the status of that environmental assessment. Would you like to entertain any questions that you may have at this time?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Kender. Absolute. Council comments? Councilman Osborne?
Just, just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you. Thank you for coming out and giving us a little update. Joe, this, this one map on the floodplain, we had this within our El Rio management, didn't we, when you came a couple, month or two ago? I feel like I remember seeing something about this.
Yes, Mayor Lort, Councilmember Osborne, this was part of the discussion when we talked about the El Rio Design Guidelines, and that this was another project that was occurring at the same time. The redelineation of the floodplain was done by the Flood Control District, and now what Mr. Kender was talking about is kind of some of the next steps of some of the flood mitigation efforts that are going to be attempted, and the county being the lead agency, the Flood Control District being the lead agency on this particular project to do the environmental assessment, because they have to do that, because there's federal lands involved, and also that there are endangered species that have to be taken into consideration.
Thank you. My, my last question, is BLM, and I think they are, but I don't recall, are you also in concert with helping the removal of the salt cedars? Have you given input onto that situation? Either one of you, I'm not sure who wants to answer.
Not quite sure what you mean by are we in concert, but we, on the east side of 85, we did in, initially it was on the east side. On the east side of 85, we did our own internal environmental assessment, and our fire crews have been actively removing tamarisk salt cedar right now.
Are those the same thing that, that I meant? I, I got it confused.
It's the same thing, yes.
Okay. I did not realize. I always hear it as salt cedar. I rarely hear the tamarisk word. Okay.
And then, as Ed was alluding to, on the east side, Maricopa County's going to take the lead on the west side.
No, it's flipped. We're the west, they're the east.
Okay, what he said.
Okay.
But, but either way, we, we started on one side, and then after we had our meeting, I believe it was about three or four months ago, where Senator McCain was in attendance, we realized that there was some interest in us doing the other side of the Interstate 85 as well, and so we decided to go ahead and take some action on that.
That was at the Buckeye meeting?
The Buckeye meeting, correct.
Yes, yes. And I appreciate that. My, my word, concert, would be collaboration with everybody, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Just appreciate you coming up and giving us an update. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
So, I'm, so that I understand this correctly, it's going to be approximately two years till the district projects are totally closed down, or that you're able to resolve them?
The target shooting on the Sonoran Desert National Monument, we have a court order to have it completed in a Record of Decision entered by September 30th of 2017.
Of 2017, okay.
Grazing is going to take longer.
Okay.
And once we hit the land health evaluation, then we have another decision point, milestone to hit, and then we branch off one way or the other, whether or not we found that it is compatible with the monument objects. If it is, then we would just do a RMP amendment to update the data, and at that point, if we found that we have to make an RMP amendment, then we would have to do another, another Environmental Impact Statement and go down that route, which would probably take at least another two years.
I hope we don't, because that'll take such a long time, but I understand it.
Right, I understand, ma'am. I, I feel the pain, too. I started in the position in 2013 myself and inherited the whole process, so I'm anxious to put everything to bed as well.
Well, we appreciate all that y'all are doing to help us get something done in the Sonoran Valley. We really thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council? I just want to thank you. I was at the meeting in Buckeye, and I thought it was, I thought it was a very collaborative meeting, and you came forth with suggestions and, of course, the information you gave us tonight. So it's, it's a fight for all of us that we have to get rid of those trees. So we just thank you for your cooperation that day, and thank you for coming tonight and informing the council. Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, now, excuse me, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak? And we're going on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items 6.1 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve the expenditure of $20,000 for public art at Goodyear City Hall.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to? And council, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Pizzillo and a second for Councilman Osborne. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lort?
Aye.
Passed a 7-0.
All right, we're into business, so I would like council, again, to refrain from asking any question until staff is finished with their briefing. The first item on the business is the Youth Commission Presentation, recognition of an outgoing youth commission members and to consider new appointments and reappointments. So Laura Valencia, Assistant to the Council, to present. Have I gone to the wrong page?
No, you're right.
Oh, here, there she is.
You're right.
We're just going to have to get you to sit in the front row.
Mayor and council, good evening. Thanks so much for having us tonight. We, as you know, have an awesome, awesome youth commission program here at the city. We've been really fortunate to have a number of really brilliant, fun, qualified youth commission participants the last few years. So tonight, we just wanted to recognize some of our outgoing youth commissioners who have graduated high school and are moving on to bigger and better things, some in-state, some out-of-state. I'll let them each tell you a little bit about their plans if they'd like to. So we'd like to present each of them with a plaque, recognizing them for their outstanding commitment to the city's youth commission, and then afterward, we'd like to have the two new youth commissioners come up and swear their loyalty oath, right?
Right.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay, so, we'll start with Kaylee Fugel. And once we've presented all of these plaques, we'd like to have one of our commissioners kind of give you a rundown of what they've been working on for the past year, and that'll be Carson Farrell. He'll be the last to receive his plaque.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Kaylee. And Kaylee, if you'd like to share your welcome too about your plans now that you've graduated, if you'd like.
We'd love to hear from you.
I will be studying pre-med at UCLA.
Oh, awesome. Oh, awesome. So can we keep you in the West Valley? Can we sign a contract with you tonight that you will eventually come back? We're happy with that.
Next, we have Daniel Rivera.
I'll be going to ASU for med school as well.
Awesome, Daniel. And I think I see you in church on Sunday.
Yes.
I think it's the same church, congratulations.
Then we have Nick Acierdo.
Yes, yes, yay, Nicky.
I'll be attending ASU at Barrett starting next month, and I'll be going into the program of earth and environmental studies, so super excited.
Wonderful, another great career field. Thank you.
And we have Courtney Rattkes. I will be going to NAU to study secondary education.
Awesome, great. Need more teachers, and again, you're bound to have to, I'm sorry, but stay in the West Valley. Yes.
And lastly, we have Carson Farrell, and Carson's going to share a little bit about, as I mentioned, what the commission has been up to for the last year, some of their community service projects and other projects they've been working on.
Wonderful.
I'm going to be attending Trinity University in San Antonio, majoring in Russian, and also participating in Air Force ROTC.
Yay, very admirable, thank you.
All right, so the mission of the Youth Commission is to engage the community through public service, develop knowledge of municipal government, and be a voice for Goodyear's Most meetings, we had a department presentation, and we had the fire department and tour of the station opposite Cavco with Chief Luizzi. We had Chief Guyer and Deputy Chief Rodriguez come in and give us a presentation on the police department. We had a presentation from the mayor and council, and we also had Rob Boer give us a presentation on intergovernmental affairs. Some of our really awesome service projects were October of 2015. A couple of us participated in trick-or-treats so kids can eat, and almost 200 pounds of food was collected just in the Estrella area. In January of 2016, we did personality assessments and team building projects, which was kind of ridiculous, the amount of marshmallows we wasted. And February 2016, we did the Tale of Two Cities fundraiser, where we sold sodas and water and raised almost $400, which doubled last year's total. In March of 2016, we had leadership lessons from Councilmember Osborne, and that was also in May, April too. Yeah, we had two lessons, which was pretty fun. Again, we had Oreos. In April of 2016, we donated the proceeds of the Tale of Two Cities fundraiser to the Homeless Youth Connection. As a commission, we decided what do we want to do that would be relevant to teens in our area, and we decided on the Homeless Youth Connection. And in May of 2016, we filmed and made, debuted our public service announcement, raising awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving.
That was a full schedule, we'll have to.
So obviously, these commissioners are very involved, so I think it's safe to say on behalf of the mayor and council, we thank you very much for your service to the Youth Commission. We'll miss you very much, I know I'll miss you guys a lot, you've been really fun to work with. So, if they have nothing else to share, and if mayor and council don't have any additional questions for them.
They may, but let's go ahead and we'll get to that point, okay? I need a motion and a second here before we get to that, okay? Could we do that now?
Sure.
Okay, so could I please have a motion a second to appoint Alex Gonzalez and Ryan Scully? Is this where I'm supposed to be?
Not, we're, we'll call the two of them up now, if that's okay?
We're just thanking them.
Oh, we're just thanking them, I'm sorry, I sure got off of it. All right, council, you have the floor.
Do you want to start down there for the thank yous?
You don't want to start first?
I do, but by the time it gets to Cheryl Lynn, she's like, what else is there to say?
I'm saying Bill Stip.
Well, I'll be brief for everyone else's benefit. Seriously, thank you very much. I know it's a huge commitment, especially, you know, in your final years of high school, but it sounds like you all have great futures, so thank you for the service that you've given to the city, and we look forward to hearing your names again in the future.
Oh, what Bill said. I tried to wait.
I appreciate that. No, and I too, I hope you found it a very rewarding experience. We know that the city of Goodyear is a better place because of your actions, and we thank you.
I enjoyed the pizza parties with you guys. We did fun things. And I want to thank you for participating in the book sales for our Friends of the Library year after year, that was so kind of you to do it twice a year to help us unload the books, and then sell them, and then pack them back up, and it means a lot to us. And I also would like to thank you for participating in our GAIN events, and every time we've asked you to volunteer, you've always been there. And I'm so proud of every one of you because you're going, you're going off with such a great foundation of being able to participate in a wonderful program that will serve you the rest of your life. So thank you all so very much, and good luck to you, and let us hear from you.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, I'm proud of you guys, and I'm thankful that you have participated on our Youth Commission, and I can tell you that I have great expectations for you, and I think that, I think you'll be able to achieve them. In fact, I'm sure you'll be able to achieve them. And I want you to always take that with you, that you can be the difference in this world, okay? Whether it's one person, or whether it's for the entire nation, you can change your world, and you always need to remember that, because you're from Goodyear, all right? And you, that's a big deal. You can say, "I am from Goodyear," and I can make a difference in the world, all right? So I thank you for the fun that we had, remember? No wimpy handshakes, we went over that? And I will tell you, darling, that you, going off to NAU and becoming a teacher, I lost my daughter-in-law and my son to Flagstaff because they went to NAU. So the mayor said, "You must all come back, and you must be in the West Valley." So have a great next four to 10 years if you're going to be a doctor, but we know you'll do great things, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say thank you all for your service to your community. You could have chose to do other things with your time, but you didn't. You chose to help out, you chose to serve and make a difference, and that means a lot. In this day and age, we hear so much negative, and it's so great to see what a wonderful group of young people you are, and what you're going to achieve, and what role models you are and will continue to be for those coming up. So thank you all, and you will do wonderful things.
Councilman Pizzillo?
As Councilmember Stip said, it gets down to the end there. Again, I also want to thank you. Again, you could be doing something other than this, appreciate you stepping up to the community, and I've always said, I really pride ourselves on this community, because we are a community, not just a collection of neighborhoods, by shown by all the volunteers and people who give of their time in this community, it is tremendous. And again, you're a perfect example of that. Wish you well in your careers, God bless.
About that, I think I'm the last one here, I just want to thank you so much for your service and the time you've put into it, and my statements earlier, I was truly, I want you to really think about that, about after you're educated, coming back to your communities and giving even more than you've given during this time. So thank you, thank you very much. Let's give a round of applause.
So we've got two new youth commissioners that we'd like to swear in tonight, we'll be reappointing. Joshua Heinz, he's unfortunately not able to be here. He was going to try to make it, his flight got in at 7:00 tonight, and so he was cutting it a little close, but he's sorry that he can't be here. So if Alexis and Ryan would like to come up, I think Maureen, our city clerk, can administer the loyalty oath?
I'm sorry.
We can go ahead and do the motions on both of those?
Yes, I'm going to.
And they can come on up?
She said, the two coming up that are on the schedule, all right, thank you. Could I have a motion a second to appoint Alex Gonzalez and Ryan Scully? Oh, you mean, I got it right, all right, that went well. As members of the Youth Commission, the serve two-year terms expire May 31st, 2018. Could I have a motion a second, please?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Council Stip and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion.
Welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Welcome, and we expect great things from you all too, so thank you again for stepping up and choosing to volunteer and give your time to your community. Thank you very much.
All right, and we're going to vote on this. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, you are now a member, congratulations.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Quite welcome. Now, I don't know, we have one more to go here, what you want to do about pictures tonight, so you just need to let us know afterwards, okay? And we have to do the oath, so we're going to do the oath at the end, right? All right, if I got, because I wasn't quite, all right, let's get going then. Could I have a motion a second to reappoint Joshua Heinz as a member of the Youth Commission to serve a two-year term expiring May 31st, 2018? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne and a second from Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion, no discussion. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. The city clerk will now administer the oath of loyalty, and then we need to get a picture of them all.
And we'll do some photos, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, are you ready? Okay, I need you to hold up your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Ryan Scott.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of youth commissioner
Of youth commissioner.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Awesome, congratulations.
All right, Lauren, if you'd like to orchestrate a photo of them, please?
Yes, sure. And then we'll have our outgoing commissioners come
All right, let's all go up and
Right here.
Just sitting on the music. Wally needs her stool.
This happens every time.
Here, Wally, why don't you come on here? This way? It looks like Joanna has two heads. There you go. We got it?
Good job, guys. Have a good summer.
The new ones are coming up. I think we were all in there to get it, weren't we? The new ones weren't in there, were they? Gosh.
The next item on business is to consider the reappointment to the public, police public safety personnel, Justin Hughes. Maureen Scott, are you going to do the honors of the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you is to consider reappointing Justin Hughes to the Police Public Safety Retirement Board. Per statute, an election must be held among the sworn members in order to select someone to represent the Public Safety Retirement Board. There are two police and two fire representatives from the city that serve on each board, and there are also two citizens that are appointed that serve on both of these boards. Councilmember Stip is the chairman of both of the boards. The police department held an election in June, and Justin Hughes received the majority of the votes. There are no term limits for this board. Sergeant Hughes has been serving on this board since July of 2012, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak? Could I please have a motion a second to reappoint Justin Hughes as the police representative to the Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board for a four-year term ending July 31st, 2020? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion? No discussion? Oops, it's Stip. I didn't see your hand, Stip.
No, it's okay, I just want to, I want to acknowledge Justin, you know, everyone who serves is, you know, does a great job, and Justin has filled in when we had a number of vacancies, done a great job. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve with him on the board.
I have to agree with you, I don't serve on that board, but Justin has great communication ability, and that means a lot on that board, so I second your motion there. Okay, anything else? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and now, Justin, you will be administered the oath of loyalty.
I did not pay for any of those comments. Not yet.
Please repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Justin Hughes.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of police PSRS member.
Of police
Police representative
Police representative.
According to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Want to get a picture?
Yes, you do, Justin.
Sure.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I was turned down, huh? Okay, let's go to 7.3. It's a business item to consider the liquor license to Sneaky Pete's Billiards. Suze Brungart, deputy city clerk, almost promoted you, will present.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to present the new Series 7 liquor license for Sneaky Pete Billiards. Sneaky Pete Billiards is in the commercial complex located on the corner of Estrella Parkway and Goodyear Boulevard North. This is a new business, and they anticipating, anticipate opening at the end of this month. Their site plan includes a total of 10 pool and billiard tables, and in addition to normal business operations, they plan to participate in pool leagues and host tournaments, and they will promote a family-friendly environment. If this application is approved, they plan to sell beer and wine, and will also provide a limited food service menu, and that concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience if you have any questions.
You should, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, does Mr. Mario Cardona want to speak? All right, fine. All right, then, since that, could I have a motion a second, please, to approve the request from Mario Cardona, owner and agent for Sneaky Pete's Billiards LLC, for a Series 7 person transfer location, transfer liquor license, number 07074004, located at 15450 West Goodyear Boulevard, Suite 135, Goodyear, Arizona 85338. Just to let you know, it's generally located on the northeast corner of Estrella Parkway and the Goodyear Boulevard North.
So moved.
Second. So roll, any council discussion? Councilman Osborne?
Welcome to Goodyear. Thank you for bringing some entertainment with billiards, we appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I love the name, it sounded exciting, I don't know, it sounds like fun, and I love billiards, and we need entertainment in our city, so I think this is just great. So with that, I'm asking for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?[1683.54]
And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience if you have any questions.
You should, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, does Mr. Mario Cardona want to speak? All right, fine. All right, then, since that, could I have a motion a second, please, to approve the request from Mario Cardona, owner and agent for Sneaky Pete's Billiards LLC for a Series 7 person transfer location transfer liquor license, number 07074004, located at 15450 West Goodyear Boulevard, Suite 135, Goodyear, Arizona 85338. Just to let you know, it's generally located on the northeast corner of Estrella Parkway and the Goodyear Boulevard North. So moved. So roll, any council discussion? Councilman Osborne.
Welcome to Goodyear. Thank you for bringing some entertainment with, with billiards. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I love the name. It sounded exciting. I don't know, it sounds like fun. And I love billiards, and we need entertainment in our city, so I think this is just great. So with that, I'm asking for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Stip.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano.
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Congratulations. The last item on business is 7.4, to consider approval of the budgeted expenditure to complete the construction of the police operations facility. Regis Reed, project manager, is here to present. Regis.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Osborne, members of council. I'm here before you this evening to bring you the GMP 2 of the CMA risk construction contract for the police operations facility. It was decided due to funding availability that the project, the construction of the project would be broken into two GMPs. GMP 1 was brought to you and approved on November 9, 2015 for an expenditure of $4,650,000 for GMP 1 of this contract. GMP 1 included such items, such as the grading and paving of the project, the concrete, the street improvements, curb and gutter, sidewalks, the vertical construction of all the exterior block, interior framing, drywall, all of the interior rough ends for the plumbing, the mechanical, and the HVAC systems, along with structural steel. This site plan represents, the site plan was presented to you in November, and the site plan has not changed from GMP 1, and all the amenities are still there. This is a photograph of the picture taken last Monday of the building, front of the building, just to get, show you the progress of the project since GMP 1 was approved. As you can note, the facility takes on many of the aspects of the Goodyear Municipal Complex, utilizing the red and the brown founder's block, the stucco textures and colors, and the same glazing in front doors of the buildings that are just north of it. As with the site plan, the floor plan also did not change from GMP 1. And before you this evening on GMP 2, we're going to be completing things, the completion of the structure, the construction of such items as the flooring, the painting, the plumbing fixtures, the electrical trim, HVAC trim, the cabinetry, countertops, and all the landscaping of the project, along with the audiovisual equipment within the building. In November, we presented this construction schedule, and we've maintained that schedule, as you can see in the green completed items and the ongoing items. We are on task to complete the project in November and be moving the police department to end of December of this year. The original budget of $7,770,139 will not be exceeded with this GMP contract. The funding by year, as you can see in the chart above, 2016, we had $315,984 remaining from that budgeted year, which was rolled over to help subsidize this fiscal year of $750,000 of funds available, and also to purchase remaining items such as furniture fixtures and equipment, IT and things like that. So available for GMP 2 is $1,65,984. Staff recommendation this evening is to approve the budget expenditure of $804,219 to D.L. Withers Construction Company for the construction and fining out the construction of GMP 2 for the police operations facility.
Thank you, Regis. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And could I have a motion, please, to approve the budget expenditure of $804,219 for guaranteed maximum price to change order to complete the construction of the police operation facilities? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
If I read this right, Regis, you're two-for-two, on time and under budget, right?
Let's keep that going.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Councilman Osborne.
Well, I, I appreciate the explanation, because when I first opened this and I saw that, this is something I've, I've learned now, that change order is usually an ugly word. And so, and it's very expensive, and so when I saw that, I was a little taken aback. So I appreciate how you went back through the timeline of all of this and how that we're still, because to my first eyes, I wanted to scream. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, we're all happy to see this come to an end, so we'll be looking for the final product, the final building. We look forward to walking through it. So, Regis, thank you for all you do. So let's go ahead, council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Well, we're almost there, aren't we? Vacation time. Does council have any comments, commendation reports on current events you'd like to talk about? Councilman Campbell.
I'd like to share two things with you. First, the Friends of the Library funded a magic program at our, in the children's area at our library this past week. And that afternoon, we had 264 children that attended the magic show. And I know the fire chief is not listening, thank you very much, because it's probably too many in the one area. But it just shows that we are exceeding all expectations of our library, and we're just thrilled to death. And on another note, I'd like to thank council and staff for all of the very, very sweet texts, notes, phone calls, visits due to my husband's sudden illness. And I, I have to absolutely tell you, I'm very grateful to Fire Crew 181 for transporting my husband, and I just want to thank everyone. The flowers were beautiful. It stopped the entire floor when it came on because of the colors, and people came in and took pictures of it and wanted to know where they came from because they were so gorgeous. So thank you all very, very much. I, I really appreciate that you reached out to me in such a stressful time. It was just, I, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, we're all so glad to see him at home now. Wally and our prayers are still with him for his recovery. Any other comments from anybody? No?
And our vacation is canceled. Mine is.
Oh.
That's all right.
Well, we'll have to call you and have you to lunch or something, do something. Does the manager have any report to give?
Mayor and council, first, it's Regis's birthday tomorrow, so if you want to catch him. Sorry, I could not. We will not ask him to give a speech.
And you will not ask us to sing "Happy Birthday"?
No, no, Mayor. Just a couple of things. There will be some of the management team that'll be down in Morana Wednesday through Friday this week. It's our Arizona City Managers Association Conference. So our acting city manager, while, will be available, but it'll be by distance. So Dan Cotterman will be the acting city manager starting on Wednesday through the week. And it's a, it's a great opportunity, as you know, it's, it's about networking, but really to enhance a profession and our, our skills in those areas. A lot of good topics for this upcoming conference. We actually have Pam as one of the presenters, too, so she, she'll be famous after that, I'm sure.
We have all the confidence in the world. She showed that tonight, that she has that ability.
Absolutely. And, and the other, and I know, Mayor, you'll be going through the calendar. But as we go into this break, it's always a time for just a very quick reflection. Thank you very much to the mayor and council over this last period of time going through the budget and leading up to the time where we get a chance for a little bit of a break from council meetings. We come back on August 22. But a special thank you to each of you for your efforts throughout the year, and it is a well-deserved break, so look forward to seeing you when you come back.
I will ask staff summary of a follow-up action to be sure that you have that on your radar at the end of that session we had today in the workshop. So if you just address that.
Absolutely. There were several notes that we took during the work session part of it, not as part of the council meeting. And we will be going forward with how we focus the retreat, and, and the bulk of the retreat will focus on the strategic action plan. We will still bring a list of other items for consideration, but a lot of those could be discussed as part of the strategic action plan as far as new initiatives. But, and we will follow up with some of the comments. We'll get information on the tiger grants, on sidewalks. And I know there was a third one. I already put it in my briefcase, but we will be following up with some of those specifically in, in the next few weeks.
And some of them have yellow papers already on them, so that you might be able to, to look through that, too. Anything else from council for staff? All right. Yes, Councilman Stip.
As timing always has it, the US Army does not like to follow a regimental schedule.
You're going to have to speak into that, because I cannot hear you over here.
I will, I will physically be absent the first two meetings on the return back from, from break. I'll be in beautiful Fort Hood, Texas.
Oh, okay.
But I, I informed the manager I intend to call in more than likely for the first meeting. But it'll be like 10 weeks before I see everybody again.
Okay, all right. Well, stay safe in that timeframe.
Sir.
Okay. Well, when the army calls, you must go, so, all right. Council, I want to thank you. I, I thank you for each of you and all the things you've done this year, the, the events you've attended, the questions you've given to staff, the work you've done, and the follow-up. It's admirable. You're a great council. Again, I just have to tell you, the last two days, people pat me on the back about this council, and they love the way the city's run. I've come back at them asking, "Well, what about taxation? What about the grocery tax? What about this?" And so I kind of inundate them with a few questions. And I can tell you, these people turn around to me and said, "We're happy the way this city is run." And I thank them for the time that they took. They said, "It doesn't take any time for to tell you thank you." So I just want you to know, I'm still getting positive feedback of all the work you've done. And, and staff, thank you. Thank you for all your work. I, boy, is this a vacation for you. I know you're going to enjoy it. I know you're still going to have to work, but you deserve some time off without voices in your ear. And so I hope that you'll, everybody here will give them that moment, okay? So the next meeting will be a work session and a regular meeting on August 22, 2016. And then following that will be 8:29 and 9:12. So with no further business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.